Good evening, everyone. Welcome. It's always a little startling. I apologize. I always try and do it softly, and it still is way louder than I feel like it should be. Welcome to the Kent City Council meeting for April 4, 2023. It is wonderful to see all of you here this evening. If you could please stand and join me in the flag slot, we'll get the meeting started.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Kim, could you please call the roll?
Thank you. Mayor Ralph?
Here.
Council President Boyce?
Here.
Councilmember Fincher?
Here.
Councilmember Cor?
Here.
Councilmember Larmer? Councilmember Michaud?
Here.
Councilmember Thomas? Councilmember Troutner?
Here.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Kim. Next item is approval of the agenda. We do have one change that I am aware of, which will be adding an item for an excused absence for Councilmember Thomas. And any other changes from council or staff? Okay, seeing none, a motion would be in order with the agenda change as mentioned.
So move.
Second.
Of a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries 5-0. Thank you. That is going to bring us down to public recognition, which is going to be the best part of this meeting this evening. We have a lot of things to celebrate and to talk about, important things to our community. We are going to start out with our Employee of the Month. So each month here at the City of Kent, employees get together and they have the ability to nominate one of their coworkers as Employee of the Month for representing the city's vision, mission, values, and goals, whether it be in a particular project or more times than not, it's just how that employee approaches their everyday tasks and how they are there to support the mission of the city and to support their coworkers and do it in a way that really makes them stand out to their peers. So tonight, I am very excited to announce that our April 2023 Employee of the Month is Josh Gonzalez. And Josh is a part of our multimedia communications team, which is housed in the mayor's office. So that's this big smile on my face. Really excited to have Josh be recognized tonight. So he was hired by the city on April 17, 2017, as the Multimedia Art Direction Coordinator. His position was reclassed on July 1 of '21 to Multimedia Supervisor. As the Multimedia Supervisor, Josh supervises the creative art direction for the City of Kent's in-house graphic and video services, supervises assigned staff and the daily work process by the Multimedia Service Division to ensure that visual projects are produced in a creative, efficient, effective, and timely manner to meet the branding and service needs for all city departments. He's ultimately responsible for the quality of the final creative work of the team. So you see it all around you, that opening video, all of the printed materials that come out of the city. Josh was nominated because his demeanor, work ethic, leadership, and kindness have been consistently exemplary. His commitment to the mission and values of the City of Kent is obvious in both his work product and the caring way he interacts with others. He models innovative leadership and inspires teamwork. He is excellent at communicating, and he has the highest level of integrity, and his ability to show that he values others is always at the forefront of his interactions. Regarding his work, Josh's skill set is amazing. Regardless of the size of the project, Josh always tackles it with the same desire to create something perfect for the customer. He has a natural eye for what looks and sounds good, but it goes beyond that. He listens to his customers, focuses on their vision, and manages to execute the final product in a creative, effective way. He understands that the relationship with his coworkers and stakeholders is fundamental in creating a project that hits the mark. He's extremely effective as a leader and does not shy away from difficult conversations and always approaches them with the intent to listen and then find a creative solution to the problem. He continuously embraces our values, and we celebrate him as our April Employee of the Month. Congratulations, Josh.
Hi, thank you, Mayor, Council President, Council Members. I am here because I want to speak and add a little bit of extra stuff for Josh. So Josh is part of the communications team, and he truly does embody the city's values of integrity, caring communication, teamwork, innovation, and achievement. Josh interacts with every city department and the public almost daily. I continually receive positive feedback from staff and residents who have the pleasure of interfacing with Josh. This is one of the many ways that it shows that Josh cares for those that we serve. And then you see the work that he produces. Wow. I mean, I can't say more. He is one of the most talented, creative, and innovative people I've had the pleasure of working with. He has a talent for finding just that right angle. He lights you all very well. I know you know that. And he produces things that have returns, and that they are effective communication for our residents and really inform people. And leading by example, he helps motivate our team to be the national award-winning communication team that we are. We are innovators in our field. And I could not be prouder of what we do as a team, and Josh is a key component to our achievements.
Congratulations, Josh. Do you want to? I never want to put anyone on the spot.
No, I'm just kidding. No, again, when you work at a place that inspires that and pulls that from you, I think it's very easy to do. And the team really pushes me to be a better leader and to kind of just really create the best representation of the residents and to present the best communication to you guys. And so, thank you, guys, for allowing me to do this. So, thank you.
Do a picture.
We're not used to being on the other side.
I say. Smize.
I photobomb you.
So Josh does the majority of the city's photography. And so, all the way through the pandemic, when we were working on our mask distribution and all of those photos that you saw, everybody up here, all around town with the masks on, that's what he would always say. He smiles, "Smile with your eyes," because you couldn't see the face. So that's what I was telling him up here. I will say, he's an incredible asset to the city and the community and is able to highlight and showcase who we are, not only the people, but our physical assets that we have around the city in such a way that is pretty amazing. So we're very, very grateful. And he's just an all-around, super-nice guy. So, thanks, Josh. Always fun to celebrate. We get another celebration. So the next item on the agenda says, "Recognition of Kent 101 Graduates." So now is my chance to brag a little bit on all of you that are sitting out here. So Kent 101 is something that we started in 2019. Our first class ended up right as the pandemic was coming on, and we were shutting things down. Like, I think we made it to that very last class, and then there was nothing else in person. We tried a couple of sessions remotely, just wasn't the same, and now we're back in person. And I told you all this about the departments, but now I'm going to ask the same thing. Don't tell the other classes. But this is, hands down, Ben, my favorite class.
That sounds familiar.
Right? It's so true. This class, Kent 101, is an eight-week series that is put on for residents. Folks that are employed in the City of Kent are just interested in what we're doing, and it breaks down all of the functions of the city, starting with administration and finance, working through HR, IT, parks, public works, economic, community development, public safety. And really is a way for us to engage in back-and-forth conversation and talk about what's on our residents' minds, what they're interested in, and just an opportunity to ask those questions that you don't... I don't know in what other format you have that opportunity. This particular class of Kent 101 was so engaged. We had the best conversation. Great questions for every presentation. Definitely things where we were taking notes, like, "Oh, we should do this," or "We need to make sure to include that next time." I could not be more grateful for the fact that all of you chose to spend three hours of your evening with us. And I said it over and over again, I could talk about the City of Kent all day long. Like, I don't need prompting or help, and you let us do that. And we are really, really grateful for that. This is a program that our very own Tracy Taylor has taken on and has done a spectacular job at organizing, making sure that all of our participants in Kent 101 had everything they needed through the class, made sure there were snacks and water, made sure the speakers were here, that your materials were there on time. I can't say thank you enough, and we just really want to take this opportunity to recognize you and say thank you for investing in your community. It means the world to us. If you could all come up and join us, we're going to do photo. Got somebody that knows how to take those things here with us tonight. So even though we're honoring him as Employee of the Month, he's still working. And then Tracy's got a few things she wants to say, and we'll go from there.
I do. Madam Mayor, Council President, Council Members, these dedicated residents have committed their time and their energy in the last eight weeks to learning about the workings of our local government. They've shown a true passion for becoming engaged and informed members of our community. Their hard work and dedication are a testament to their commitment to making a positive impact in Kent. Please join me in congratulating these graduates, a 38-group of class members here that really took the time and the dedication. I couldn't be more proud, and welcoming them as active and informed members of our community. I do have your certificates. So I have all 38 of them. So I'll do those outside of chambers when we're done. But if you would please come up and take a picture with council, we would love that.
We'll just stand behind you.
Stand up here, yeah.
Everybody stand, and then we'll just kind of squish all together in the middle.
I love it. You are on brand. I love that.
We're going to do it right here. We're going to go, one, two, smize, like Josh would say. All right, and now Josh.
Anyone for me here? Ready, one, two, three? All right, thank you.
And happy.
Good job, guys.
They don't want to stay to get their certificate.
No, no. Yeah, so, and you're welcome to stay for the meeting, but I think I also wanted to let you know that you do not have to stay. We've got some good things coming up, totally up to you. But again, thank you all so much for your time and your commitment, and hoping to see all of you back again in a variety of ways. We talked about all of those different opportunities that we've got for engagement. So thank you all so much. Tracy's got your certificates in the back. Okay. We talk often at these council meetings about difficult transitions, and so I have found the easiest way to make those transitions is just to call them out and say that that's what's happening. So really going from celebrating our community to talking about something that's extremely serious, but there is hope in, because organizations like CASEARC exist. So at this point, I am going to read the proclamation for Sexual Assault Awareness Month and ask Mary Ellen Stone and our very own Dennis Higgins to come up to the podium while I read the proclamation. Whereas, by definition, sexual violence is any unwanted sexual conduct, either in person or online, including sexual assault, harassment, and abuse. And whereas Sexual Assault Awareness Month calls attention to the impact of sexual violence in communities across the state and nation, raising public awareness and educating communities on how to prevent it. And whereas, in Washington State, 45% of women and 22% of men report having experienced sexual violence in their lifetime. And whereas rape is among the most under-reported crime for many reasons, including victims' fear of being disbelieved or further traumatized within the legal system, additional barriers such as language, immigration status, gender bias, and systemic racism further oppress and silence victims. And whereas 41% of Americans have been personally subjected to harassing behavior online, and people from historically oppressed groups are more likely to experience online harassment, mirroring inequities we see elsewhere in society. And whereas negative impacts of sexual violence, trauma on adults, youth, and children include fear, concern for safety, physical and mental health conditions, including symptoms of post-traumatic stress disorder, injury, missed work, or school. And whereas, working together as a community, we can alleviate the trauma of sexual violence by ensuring supportive resources are available to all survivors while standing up to and actively disrupting harmful attitudes and behaviors that contribute to sexual violence. Now therefore I, Dana Ralph, Mayor of Kent, join advocates and communities throughout King County in taking action to prevent sexual violence by standing with survivors and proclaiming April 2023 to be Sexual Assault Awareness Month in Kent, Washington. Together, we commit to a safer future for all children, young adults, people, families, and our community. Hard transition, but very important conversation. I want you to say a few words. Okay, let's take a picture before we get...
Oh, the picture, okay.
And then, yeah, and then I definitely want you to...
Make it come up.
Absolutely.
Councilmembers and Mayor Ralph, thank you for doing this. I want to just say a couple things. I'm on my farewell tour because I am retiring later this year, and that makes me think about where we've gone, where we've come from, where we're going. Kent was one of the first cities back in the early '80s that stood up with us as King County, then King County Rape Relief. It was a long time ago. You stood up, and you said, "We're going to support you financially. We're going to make sure that the message gets out. We're going to make sure that victims in our city get services." And I want to thank you for that leadership, because that was not easy to do then. We've made some progress. It's a little easier now, but thank you for being willing to make that hard call then. Now, you know, every year, we respond to hundreds of people from Kent. About 350, as I look through the last couple of years. About 2/3 of them are children. So I just want to hold that, children and teens. We are doing everything we can to make sure that victims and their family get the support that they need. We're in downtown Renton. We are working out of the courthouse at the Regional Justice Center here in Kent. We are seeing really encouraging, positive results. We also want to expand our prevention programming, and we're working very hard to do that as well. We've been hearing a lot from the Kent School District. We're trying to figure out how to elevate that so we can get more staff there. But know that over the 40 years that you have supported us and that you have stood up for victims, that you really have made a difference. And we're not the same community that we were when we started. And a lot of that is thanks to your good work. Now, our motto is, "Be loud. I have presents for you." Each one of you can get one of these buttons.
I have one, yes. I will put it on right now.
I hope to introduce you to my successor later this year. So this won't be the last time you see me, but it probably will be the last time you read the proclamation. Thank you again for all you've done.
Mary Ellen, don't go anywhere. Councilmembers, Mayor, it's so good to see all of you, and it's an honor to be here tonight with Mary Ellen Stone. My family, as most of you know, called CASEARC on one difficult night, and I'm happy to say that they helped us tremendously. And Mary Ellen has given her life, this is her life's work, 42 years.
It'll be three in August.
Forty-three years. To build an agency that is able to help families in their darkest hour to get through to a happier and more successful and productive life. And so I just want to take this opportunity to say thank you to Mary Ellen Stone on behalf of the board, where I'm honored to sit, of CASEARC, on behalf of my family, on behalf of survivors. Thank you, Mary Ellen Stone, for all you've done to help survivors of sexual assault.
You're so welcome.
So before either Mary Ellen or Dennis get a chance to leave, I just, I want to echo all of that. So it's been many years ago now that Dennis introduced me to CASEARC and the work that was being done, and introduced me to Mary Ellen. And I've had the absolute honor of attending their annual breakfast and hearing directly from people who have benefited from the services that CASEARC provides. And the stories are nothing short of amazing because of that transformation in the services that CASEARC is able to provide to victims, survivors of sexual assault. Dennis, you and your family have been loud for as long as I have known you, and I am grateful for what that means to our community. Mary Ellen, for being there for Dennis and so many other families around our community, and for not giving up on this work. It means so much to our community, and we are all working to the day where we don't have to have these conversations. That's the goal. Until that day comes, I don't know where we would be without CASEARC. Thank you. Yeah. This sort of fits in a little bit. It's about people in our community being there for other people in our community in a different way, right? Everyone is called to serve in a different way. And our next proclamation is for National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, which is a very long way of saying, "That's the person on the other end of the line when you call 911, that is there in your darkest day, right? When the worst things are happening to your family." In the City of Kent, we have ValleyCom. And the leader, the amazing leader of ValleyCom, Laura Yuland, is here with us tonight. And I am going to go ahead and read this proclamation if you'd like to join me and tell us a little bit about the amazing work that everyone on your team is doing. So the proclamation says, "Whereas ValleyCom staff are essential first responders, they play a critical role in effectively coordinating emergency services to ensure the health and safety of our residents, businesses, and visitors 24 hours a day, 7 days a week. And whereas ValleyCom call receivers and dispatchers are important first responders who endure long hours, abnormal schedules, and stressful work situations daily, their ability to remain calm under pressure has saved the lives of countless Kent residents, employees, and visitors. And whereas the City of Kent honors the men and women who play a vital role in the protection of our community members, and whereas ValleyCom has been successfully serving the public safety communication needs of the City of Kent since 1977. Now therefore I, Dana Ralph, do hereby proclaim the week of April 9 through the 15th of 2023 as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in Kent, Washington, and urge all of our residents to pay tribute to our 911 call receivers, dispatchers, support staff, and managers, and to recognize the substantial contributions they have made to our health, safety, welfare, and quality of life."
Mayor Ralph, councilmembers, thank you so much for inviting me here to receive this proclamation. This means a lot to our staff. Up on the Hill, there are, right now, about 25 individuals who are answering. Is that for me, Kim? There's about 25 individuals who are answering 911 calls and dispatching units. They do work 24/7, 365, holidays, Christmas, middle of the night. We have a saying that if we could just get people to schedule their emergencies, our life would be so much easier. But they don't, they can't, and we're there for them. It is a difficult, it is a very difficult profession to support the field first responders, to be there for the individuals who are calling literally on their worst day, to make sure that we're doing it in a timely manner. That's always a balance. It is very, right now, is very difficult to find qualified people who want to work in that environment, and that's our current struggle as staffing. But the people that are doing it have an internal light about helping others. They're not doing it because they like working graveyard, and they're not doing it because they like hearing trauma. They do it because they like helping people. And they like doing it at ValleyCom because of the amazing support that we get from our community and from our leadership. So I report to five mayors, and I usually say after that, "Please pray for me." But...
You're nice.
I do, I can't help it, because I want that laugh. But the five mayors of South King County are so strong and so supportive and so united. And as evidenced by CASEARC, the regional collaboration of these five cities is unparalleled. I do travel across, when there's not pandemics and things, but I do travel, and I talk to other comms centers. And they do not have what we have, which is why our people like to work where they work, because of the support of the community. So thank you for the proclamation, thank you for the recognition. And valleycom.org, if anyone's interested in applying, will take it.
Thank you so much. I think an important addition to all of that is that those call receivers and dispatchers are also there guiding our police officers, firefighters, and EMTs. They're that connection between the person that's having the emergency or the crisis and the boots-on-the-ground piece of the responding. So together, our first responders are our telecommunicators and our police and fire. And none of them would be able to do their job without each other. So very grateful for that partnership and that consistency that comes from someone always picking up the other end of the line. So, thank you. Okay, last item, last but not least, on our public communications this evening, we've got a presentation from our very favorite Greater Kent Historical Society. And my notes say that it's going to be Mr. Mike Evans coming up and presenting for us this evening.
Well, you know, you're going to get the whole society.
I love that.
Not getting one. I'm Eileen Yamada-Lampier, a lifetime member of Kent community. And I'm coming to you as the president of the Greater Kent Historical Society and the Kent Museum to do a formal, official invitation for you to come down on Saturday, April 29, at 1 o'clock, to join us as we dedicate the welcome figure that has been a little bit over two years in the making. And so I want to, first of all, acknowledge that we have part of our board. Dave Johnson is here. He is our secretary. Michael Johnson, no relation, is our treasurer. Dylan High is our executive director, and you have a few words at the end. And I want to now turn it over to Mike Evans. Mike is our vice president. He is also the elected chief of the Snohomish Tribe. He is the founder and the elder of the Blue Heron Canoe Family, and he comes to you tonight as a master carver of the Native American community. So without further ado, there you go, Mike.
To all you people, to all you people. You're our friends, relatives. My name is Wakus Kedem. What I'm doing is I'm emulating a pattern that was done by Chief C. What I'm doing is I'm emulating a pattern that was done by Chief Seattle. He repeated it twice, loud and clear, and when he stood up, all the others were quiet. So you have an imitation to the dedication of the welcome figure, and that's April 29. And the dedication will be at 1:00, but you can come early. You can, starting at 11, we'll have a meet and greet. 12, we'll have a lunch for, light lunch for those that are working and those who want to stay longer. And then afterwards, there will be a coastal jam. That's where they'll get together and sing and dance, mostly from the canoe families. So what you see on the screen now is images, like things that I'm wearing, the cone-shaped hat, teepees, button blankets, bison blankets, totem poles. And my question to everybody is, are they from around here? Is that from Puget Sound? And the answer is, none of those. None of those images come from the Puget Sound before contact. They weren't here. The cone-shaped hat, not from Puget Sound. The blanket with that image on it is not from the Puget Sound. So basically, what you know, you need to throw out the window. Because most of it is wrong. Anything that you see on television, media, newsprint, what you've read, is an opinion, and it's not necessarily following the true lines. So basically, if you were to throw everything away and start from new. This is an 1872 stereograph where they had the two images to make a 3D. But if you were to enlarge that and look at the left-hand corner house post, that is a figure of a person. It's about twice as big as a normal person, but they called it a totem, and that's not really what a totem is. So there's another welcome figure down in the middle at the bottom, and that was my inspiration for making a welcome figure. So totems didn't come from the Puget Sound, but welcome figures were here. So now I have a storyline that I can tell other people that, a totem? What's that? And then I can create the storyline and start to inject some truth to the story. But everything you've probably seen in the, so far, just think about, you may need to throw it out and start all over again. Next slide. So we started with a tree. And the tree was a blowdown in September of 2017. And one of the neighbors saw it blow down, and that was the father of one of the canoe family members. And they knew that we did a lot with cedar. And so they offered up this blowdown, and we took it, we cut it up, and originally, it went to Edmunds College. But I didn't have enough time, it's an hour drive each direction, and I didn't have enough time to actually carve on it. So we brought it down to the Kent Museum. And upper left, you see, starting to work on axes and heavier types of tools being used, and it's starting to take shape. Next slide. Here it is, we got it standing up, and next to me, and you'll see that I made it look like I was big, standing on the...
I say Chuck looks way shorter than he does in real life.
But it's a people-like plus a base, and we've been carving with gouges, and then a little bit with some other tools, including curved knives. And so we put a unique face on it, more of a spirit-like face rather than a human face. And this is to be able to tell the story that totem poles don't come from this area, but welcome figures were here. And that storyline continues. And that's really what I like to teach at the museum, is more about the storylines. So the artifact itself is not as important as the story that goes with it.
Thank you.
So have a rock, tell a whole story about a rock. Then it's impressive what they did with the rock and what was it used for. But without that story, it's just a rock. And there, oh, one more item is that there is a potential that we can continue this process. I've gotten in contact with the city of Linwood, and they have a couple of logs, and we may be able to bring them down and carve for the city of Linwood two welcome figures, a male and a female. So the process can continue with our storylines.
So Mike is very, very modest, but one of the strengths of what Mike has been doing over these last two years is every Friday from 1 to 3, he's out there on the grounds, and anybody can come down, and he will tell you stories. Sometimes they're fourth-grade jokes, but sometimes he truly is passing along Native American history, stories that, you know, it didn't start, I mean, city of Kent didn't start in the late 1800s, you know? So it's an opportunity, especially for you young people, to learn about the true history of Kent before the colonists came. So with him having an opportunity to bring down a couple more logs and be able to carve it on our property, that is just going to be fantastic opportunity for all the kids, all the adults, residents of the Greater Kent, to come down and interact with a master carver. Not many of us get that opportunity, so. So now I'm going to turn it over to Dylan.
Thank you. As you can tell, Mike is an amazing community member, asset, and an amazing educator. And, you know, that's what I am so excited about, I think, you know, for our role with the Greater Kent Historical Society, is to educate about the history for us all to share and learn together. So we do welcome you all to please come to the museum, April 29th, at 1:00 p.m., for the dedication of this welcome figure. I do want to give a couple of quick thank yous. First off, thank you, all of you here sitting in front of me, within the city and the members of the community. I am always truly impressed by how much history means to this community, and not just in words, but in actions, and to see how many of you show up in support of really sharing about and learning together about our history. I want to say a thank you to, again, to Mike for all of his work, both in carving and as an educator, and just as a great person. My daughter, I have a four-year-old, and she said, I want to go hang out with my friend, Mike, he's funny. So, you know, really, if you come by, he's a great person to learn from. I do want to give a quick shout-out to Nancy Simpson, our former president, who really worked to bring Mike in to the museum and get this project going. And I want to thank Four Culture, who provided some funds to make this project possible. And then finally, I just want to give a couple other quick shout-outs of a couple things coming up. This Thursday, we do have an event coming up at, this Thursday, April 6th, at 6:00 p.m. at Kent Commons. We're going to have BJ Cummings, she's the author of The River That Made Seattle, all about the history of the Duamish River, and really how that shaped not just Seattle, but this entire region. And then we also do have our 2023 scholarships for graduating seniors just opened up. Those are due May 15th. So if you are graduating this year from, either from a Kent school or you live in Kent, we welcome you to check that out and apply. And those are due May 15th. So more information, all of that is on our website. Again, I want to thank you all, and I hope you have a good rest of your night. Thank you.
Thank you. Over the last little, I don't know, months, I've been at the museum, had the chance to watch the carving take place, and it is a pretty incredible thing. And just want to, a plug for our Historical Society, the amount of work that they have been doing over the last couple of years in really setting a solid foundation for moving forward and just elevating history here in Kent and expanding it. Eileen, to your point, our history didn't start in the late 1800s, right? So making sure that we're honoring that, and then honoring the history of those that are coming to our community and now calling it home. So very grateful for the work that the Historical Society continues to do. Thank you all very, very much. All right. We are going to move on to community events. Council President Boyce.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Mayor. A couple of things going on. Our Thunderbirds are really doing extremely well, and they could be playing this Wednesday, Thursday in Canada. We've got Tacoma Stars playoff game on April 5th. We have April 8th, Grupel. I have a hard time with that word, but glad when they go off, but it's at the Show West Center here. April 28th, Awakened Music Festival. May 5th, Gary Allen. And then June 3rd is our Kent International, and Mike, who just left, played a major role into our international festival. I really enjoy watching him every time tell the story, did a phenomenal job. June 9th through 11th is the Jurassic World Live Tour, which is going to be interesting to see that. And then November 25th, we have Peppo Aguilar. So a lot of stuff going on at the Show West Center, and we hoping that our Thunderbirds will keep winning and...
And go all the way.
Go all the way. So, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Fincher.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a reminder to folks that the spring cleanup, spring curbside cleanup is happening this week, so make sure that you get, on your normal day that your garbage and all is picked up. I believe it's up to 10 bags can be put out, and they will be picked up by Republic, so no extra charge for that. This is the week to get it done. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Fincher. That brings us down to item number five on our agenda, which is reports from council and staff. So opportunity to hear from all of our council members about the work that they do outside of our, these regularly scheduled meetings representing Kent at those regional conversations, making sure that our voice is being heard and a part of those conversations. It's the old saying, if you are not at the table, you might be what's for dinner, much more eloquent way to say that, but that's really it, right? If we're not there and putting our voices in to those conversations, then we're not being represented. And grateful for the amount of time that our council spends. I will highlight a few things that I have done this last week before I pass it over to Council President Boyce. Start with the chief administrative officer's report is in the packet, and we do not have an executive session this evening. Grateful to say that our CAO, we saw, had a chance to see him yesterday, he'll be back at work again tomorrow, and is working his way back. So we'll be happy to have Pat back with us here very shortly. Couple of regional meetings that I have attended, I sit on the Puget Sound Regional Council's Executive Board and Executive Committee. At our last meeting, one of the topics of conversation was what's called FTA funding, and it's transit or transit agency funding that comes from the federal government. The model that has been used to distribute that funding has been in place for a very long time, and it's called Earn Share, and it's really based on, if you're earning it, you get more money. So it's kind of that, if you've already got money, you get more money, and if you don't have money, it's harder to get that in, that funding in. A lot of our smaller agencies, Pierce County in particular, Pierce County Transit, really had strong concerns with the fact that those smaller agencies, because they don't have the ridership simply based on population or the resources to develop additional routes, were not seeing equitable distribution of funding. And you think about rural Pierce County, very underserved population and high level of need there. So over about an eight meeting, series of meetings, eight meetings, a working group got together and came up with some ideas on how to more equitably distribute that federal funding. Not as big of a switch in the process as I think a lot would like to see. A lot of that had to do with money that was already committed to the bigger organizations, and that they've already done their planning around it, but we did see a shift in some of that new funding that's coming out of the federal government. So that was probably the biggest conversation we had at PSRC. Yesterday, I attended the Regional Policy Committee meeting with King County, and as RPC, we voted on moving to the ballot in November, the renewal of the Veterans, Seniors, and Human Services levy. So at this point, it is going to be a renewal, meaning that it started out at 10 cents when it began six years ago, and it will be coming back at 10 cents. I cannot guarantee that because there were several county council members on the call that said that they would like to see that levy amount increase. So it will come back to the committee that I sit on for that vote, but as it left our committee on Monday, recommendation was that it go back to the voters in November at that 10 cents level. We also had our flood, our first flood control advisory committee meeting. I chaired that group, and it was just a level-set meeting, getting sort of everybody up to speed on what projects were done last year, where we're at. We had some really interesting history on the river system, ties great in with the presentation that the Historical Society talked about, about the Green Rivers, the White River, how all of those systems play here in the Kent Valley. So we will go forward, and the role of that board is really to provide an advisory letter to the King County Flood Control District on their budget. As you might guess, it's very, very important to the city of Kent. We have benefited from that Flood Control District funding in more zeros than I can count. I'm looking back there at Chad, and it's a lot of money. We wouldn't have been able to do the flood projects, the levy reconstruction that we've done to this point without the Flood Control District. So as those meetings pick up speed, I will report out on those. Two more quick items, I apologize for the length of tonight's report. Legislative session is still happening up until the 23rd of April. Over the last Saturday, for about six hours, I sat waiting to testify. I got two shots at one-minute testimony. The two things on Saturday we talked about were Blake, that is the decision around illegal drugs or not illegal drugs, however the state decides to address that. Kent continues to weigh in that we do believe there needs to be criminal justice involvement in providing a way for people to get to treatment. So we're hoping that the legislature solidifies some of that work so that we will have that pathway for people where they can choose treatment as an option. We'll see where that goes. The other bill that I testified on was around competency hearings. So if someone is arrested and it's determined that they're not competent to stand trial, they are referred for an evaluation, and oftentimes, they will be, what's called restoration is requested. That is a function of the state. In the city of Kent, last year, we had 125 defendants that were, we needed competency hearings on. Thirty-five of them were referred for restoration. Only seven of them were transported by the state, and none of them since May. So that system has come really to a screeching halt. The only solution then is that those folks that are not competent to stand trial, they're released back out into the community without any sort of treatment. And that is not good for them, and it is not good for the community. So the bill before the legislature is to make misdemeanor crimes not eligible for restoration, which would mean that 125 people in our court just get sent back out into the community without services. We don't see that as a good thing in the city of Kent. It does not connect people to services. So that was the testimony that I provided on that bill. I also testified the day before on pursuits. We are asking that the legislature take a look at the pursuit laws that they passed several years ago. There has been a slight expansion, which allows for violent crime, a legal standard of reasonable suspicion versus probable cause, that is currently moving forward, and they've added domestic violence to crimes that can be pursued for. So we are grateful for the incremental change. There are still quite a few things we'd like to see changed with that, but are hopeful that we can get something passed this session, and we'll look again next session. Three really quick, fun things. I had a chance to hang out with the Boy Scout troop up at the American Legion last Monday as two young men were promoted to Eagle Scout. Very, very cool to hear about their journey and the path that they took to get there. And then I also got to hang out with some Boy Scouts, Troop 402 up at Sunrise Elementary, as they were learning about citizenship and what community meant. as they were learning about citizenship and what community meant to them. So those are the fun parts of the job that I get to do. With that, I am going to turn it over to Council President.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And just to add to all the testimony you've been giving, right, there's a lot of things going on in Olympia. Please feel free to educate yourself and reach out to your legislator. And you have a voice, and make sure your voice is heard, right? We all care about this city here, and just some things that educate yourself and be sure to reach out to them. Hey, for us today, we had an operation and public safety meeting today at 4 o'clock. Pretty quiet meeting, we paid our bills, and then we had one agenda item that requires some action where we actually approve an IT processor, program here for our economic community development. So just so we can continue in IT contract that we approved. During our workshop today was very, a great workshop, in my opinion. We actually sat down and met with the leadership of the Kent School District and their board, right? So we really, something we want to do hopefully twice a year. We are definitely two different entities, but we're definitely joined at the help. We all know people move to this city, number one, because of the school, and also they move here because of the city and the safety, right? So you just can't separate those two. But I would say that during our conversation, we had a great conversation, just really talking about, Parks Director talked about shared uses program, right? So we use the school building and, and their facility. In return, they use our, our parks, our service ball field, Kent Memorial Park, Wilson Playfield, and also the Riverbend Complex where some of the high school team golfed at. So it was a great meeting. We shared a lot of things that we can do together, talked a lot about safety, safety within the school. That was a great conversation. Also, we talked about the, the state of the district. Superintendent Israel Velo talked about the state of the district. And boundary change is a big thing they've been working on. So if you have a fifth grade, was going to the sixth grade, they will be in that Miller School, six, seven, eight, starting that school year. So it appears to me that the school district done a phenomenal job with the communication and talking about that. So if you have a sixth grader, you definitely be impacted by that. They talked about their strategic plan, and then they got a bond coming here on April 25th. I think there's some information back in the back, so there's a bond coming here for the Kent School District, lots of things in there. So I also encourage you to educate yourself on that. In addition to that, I sit on the South City Association Pick Committee as a chair. We had a, a net break dinner last Wednesday, and we have our executive director, Dow Con sting, was there to talk about the, the state of King County. So great turnout, lots of people there, lots of things coming our way from King County. So encourage you to continue to make sure you stay educated on something that's coming your way. Our next pick meeting will be on April 12th. This is going to be in person. This is going to be our first since COVID where we're going to have our pick meeting in person. I guess it's going to be a high bird, right? So people who don't want to meet in person, they'll still be able to dial in. So definitely looking forward to that, having us all together and really, you know, we're going to have opportunity to have dinner together first, and then we'll start our pick meetings that'll be on April 12th. And I think that's about all I have to share, so I'm going to start down to my left, and Councilmember Michelle, please.
Thank you, Council President. I serve on the Regional Law, Safety, and Justice Committee, and at their previous meeting, we got an update from Chief Padilla about all the legislative things that are going on regarding police, and the mayor already spoke to most of those, police pursuits, the Blake drug possession decision, and then also street racing. So the mayor did a great job summarizing those, so I won't do that. Our second topic was briefing on Snoqualmie's co-responder program, their police co-responder program. They have a, one mental health professional who goes out every day and rides along with a police officer. They're a smaller agency, so their program works a little different than ours, but it's good to hear what other people are doing and see what's working and what's not, so we can update and keep each other informed on what works best. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilmember Michelle. Councilmember Cor.
Thank you, Council President. I serve on Growth Management Planning Council. We had our meeting on 23rd of March, and we approved Affordable Housing Committee's recommendations on amendments on countywide planning policies and plan standards and accountability framework. And Kent was, we were in a place in those recommendations that we were happier, and I think some of the other cities are not as happy with those recommendations because they have to put in the work to have more affordable housing available in their communities. So I was very happy with this.
Yeah.
And our staff was as well. We also made appointments to Affordable Housing Committee members. We had some new appointments as one of our council members resigned from that committee. So, and we, we have more work to do on that, on just in general, on UGA expansion policies. I also serve on Domestic Violence Initiative Regional Task Force. We have not met yet. And I also serve on Puget Sound Cleaner Agency Advisory Council, and I will have those updates probably at the next council meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Cor. Thanks for also being the voice for us in this affordable housing, a lot of conversation going on. I think the city have been out in front of that for a long time around affordable housing, and you're right, it's time for the other city to kind of pick up the share of that. So thank you for being the voice for us. Appreciate that. Councilmember Troutner.
Thank you, Council President. I am Chair of the Economic and Community Development Committee. We will be meeting next Monday. I am also on the Regional Transit Committee. We will meet on April 19th, where we will hear about Metro Service Recovery Plan, also Metro Zero Emission Fleet Plan. And then lastly, I serve on the Puget Sound Regional Fire Authority Governance Board with Council President Boyce and Councilmember Thomas. We will meet tomorrow where we will vote on a plan amendment to move forward with annexation of the city of Tuckwilla to become part of the RFA. So very exciting for the organization and also for the city of Tuckwilla. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Troutner. And last but not least, Councilmember Fincher.
Thank you, Council President. King County, I'm on the King County Mental Illness and Drug Dependency Advisory Committee. Our main, two of our main topics, what I'm going to talk, what I'm going to talk about. We had True Blood, an update rather, on True Blood versus the DSHS, which was back in 2015, where it said, kind of like what the mayor was talking about, that there's, when someone is jailed, you have to be able to get them into the mental health treatment that they just, that they should have within a certain amount of time, or you have to pay X amount of dollars per day that they are going to be waiting. So we talked about the importance of the mental health, not only from the, from the position of having the police officers, the courts, the judges, but also prevention, what we can do to make sure that people are helped before it gets to the point of mental illness and hopefully defer some of them before they cause, cause problems. We talked about the upcoming, well, the need for some of the respite centers that are being proposed for the county, the lack of beds, the lack of places to be able to put people who are in need of help. The numbers are 80 to 100 people daily are waiting in jail for programs to be able to get help. And out of that 80 to 100 people, they're sitting there, we're paying. When any of those go past that time, the taxpayers are the ones who are paying for them as they wait for competency or contempt cases. So what's needed is to be able to have the outreach management, the peer enhancement, crisis intervention, to be able to get the people, the specialized outpatient treatment that they need. And some of the people, they said, have actually been locked up longer than had they had their court case tried and then served their time. And that's just while they're waiting to be able to get the help. Seattle Public Schools was one of the grant receivers when we did the Emerging Issues Grants, and they have put that money to good use already. They, their program had to deal with opioid and fentanyl prevention and education. So they are educating their students from elementary school on up. They're also trying to educate families, not only the parents, but also the aunts, the uncles, the grandparents, because that student or child goes to a number of different locations, not just the home. And so some of this is to recognize when fentanyl or opioid may be in use or may be a problem. And again, they're doing this for not only the students in school, but also making sure that they are training the families, people in the community. They're making sure that there is Narlock Zone in all of their schools. They're training staff to be able to recognize overdoses. They had their first fentanyl death in 2019, and the numbers have just gone up, up, up since then. So this is a big problem, and they're trying to figure out ways that looks like we'll be able to help decrease in attack. Bellevue did a big education program. The hope with Seattle is that this is going to be able, to be able to grow. They're working with OSPI so that this can be spread out to the other districts in the state. So beyond Bellevue, but maybe Kent School District to Bellingham, a number of other places. And they've already held some events, family events, and they have two more slated. So within the first couple of months of getting that money, they've already had about four events. There, and then of course, ways that they're going to be reporting back, how efficient is it? How effective is it? And on that, April 22nd, Drug Take Back Day, clean out your medicine cabinets. One of the ways that they figured the drugs are getting to the people who are becoming addicted is out of medicine cabinets, old medications that have been left in the shelves at home. You just pull up here to the curb at City Hall between the courtyard and, or by the courtyard, between City Hall and the Police Department, and drop off your drugs, leave them in the original prescription bottles. But that, and the Police Department takes those and turns those in to be destroyed. You can also go to a number of pharmacies around to turn those in. Public Works, we had our big thing there was we had a condemnation hearing, not as bad as it sounds, basically for strips of land, some of the people will have their easements because they are undergrounding the wires and cables that you see that carry your electricity and your television, all of that sort of stuff, undergrounding that. But they'll be getting sidewalks, they'll be getting, you know, the curb gutter, all that goes along with that. Summit Lansburg Mine, we had a, there's an interlocal agreement that we're working on with, with King County. And I want to thank the Emergency Coordination Center, their open house that they did. They did a fabulous job, and a special shout out to IT for all the work that you did to make everything run smoothly up there. They were telling me how smoothly they had to boot up for the first time. They were telling me how well that went. And went to the SCA Dinner, where I was there with Council President Boyce.
Thank, thank you, Councilmember Fincher. You can see, not, we just don't show up every first and third Tuesday, there's lots of committees, some sit on three or four different committees, right? And really, we're there to really try to represent the city. And I think the Madam Mayor said, if you're not at the table, I say you get eaten, but that's just my term, right? So I think it's important that we are at the table and speaking on the behalf of the city, whereas around affordable houses, law and safety, I think are extremely important. So, Madam Mayor, that ends our report.
Right. Thank you, Council President. Councilmember Cor, I want to chime in on something that you said, I think it bears repeating. Kent has consistently met our growth targets when it comes to the target set by the Growth Management Act and the region. That is something that we have been committed to for many, many years. And one of the things that we are very concerned about that is happening in the legislature right now is really the upending of all of those, those honestly decades of planning, taking all the work that has been done and saying, oh, we're going to change all of the rules. So something that our Economic and Community Development staff, myself, have been testifying on a lot, density does not equate to affordability. We believe in the city of Kent that if, if some of these things pass, we will actually lose our naturally occurring affordable housing. It is easier to tear down a $300,000 or $400,000 house to build six way more expensive somethings than it is on, say, the east side to tear down a $1,500 home. So we know that, that these policies, if they are passed by the legislature, will have significant impacts on our community and not necessarily in a positive way. So Councilmember Cor, thank you for your work at the county level and another one of those places to weigh in before, before we have some things that are going to bring considerable changes to our community without the infrastructure to be able to support them. So that is my, that is my soapbox on the legislature for today. We can move on. Item number six is public hearing. We do not have one. Item number seven is public comment, opportunity for members of the audience to come and speak to the council on items that relate to the work of the council, anything that's on this agenda or things that you would like to see on future work plans. Kim, do we have anyone signed up?
Well, we didn't, Mayor, but I did find some students.
I was, so if you weren't going to call them out, I was going to maybe say-
I gave him a forewarning that Council President or Mayor would be calling them up to speak. So we have three signed up, but I see four of them here. Raphael Sedan, KP Buckner, and Jason Kim. If you would like to go up to the-
Come up to the podium. State your name and city of residence for the record, and then tell us why you are here.
Yeah, I got you. I am KP Buckner, but I, my name is Kenneth Buckner, but I go by KP. It is easier. I am a student of Kentwood High School. We are in civics class, and so we had to come to a civic, to a city council meeting to come and speak with you guys today.
Thanks.
I'm Jason Kim. I'm also a senior at Kentwood High School. This, like what KP said, this is for a civics engagement project, and we wanted to attend the city council meeting and see what the councils, their goals are for the city, and just really appreciate and really glad that I'm able to be up here and serve a public comment.
I'm also a student at Kentwood High School. I'm also a senior as well. I want to make a special thank you to Councilmember Fincher for like actually pointing out, like he points about mental health and all whatnot. I'm one who suffered that during quarantine, and I really appreciate you for like pointing that out and trying to solve some problems for people who need this time, need for help and treatment. So I really do appreciate that. I'm like very thankful about that, that someone's actually going out and making like a move on it, and I'm very appreciative about that, but for you all others, but thank you for all you guys' hard work. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Go Conks!
Just for context, there was a debate at the council workshop that was a joint meeting with the school board about whether we should be saying, go Conks, go Chargers, or go Royals. Going to leave it at that, but thank you for taking the time to come out. I, I think we are all, I can speak for the entire council, so grateful that the district has this civics program. It's something that went away and has come back in the last few years, and it's really nice to see students come and engage and understand what's going on with their government. I have an interview with a Kentwood student tomorrow. She's coming to my office to, for, for her civics project to talk about city government. So thank you for taking the time out of your schedule and, and just being here and, and then for, and for standing up and sharing.
Madam Mayor, can I request that they get up here and take a picture? Should we stand behind them, please? Come on, you get up here too? Come on, come on. Come on, Brenda. You got everybody?
No, you.
There we go.
All right. One, two, three. Perfect. Thank you.
You have proof now, right?
Thank you.
All right, Kim, no other speakers? All right, that brings public comment to an end. Next item on our agenda is the consent calendar. This is a compilation of work that the council has done at committee meetings outside of this main meeting. They've received presentations, had conversation, ability to ask questions, and they've passed out of those committee meetings without controversy. We have items A through G this evening with that added.
H. Oh, yeah. HH.
All right, ours are different. A through H, including Councilmember Thomas's absence. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I could make a motion to approve the consent calendar, item A through H.
Second.
The motion is second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed? All right, motion carries, consent calendar passes. We don't have any other business this evening, but we do have one bid, 2023 Paint Line Striping and Raised Pavement Markings Replacement. And joining us is our Public Works Director, Chad Behren.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Glad to be here. This is our 2023 Paint Line Striping and Raised Pavement Markings, the little bumps on the road, replacing those throughout the city. Not a lot of extra stuff to explain here other than it's good to freshen up our pavement markings to make sure people can see their way around at night in particular. So we got two bids on this. A low bid was for $342,000 and change. We had an engineer's estimate of $390,000 and we recommend award.
All right, any questions for Chad? Hey, Councilmember Fincher, do you have a motion?
I do, Madam Mayor. I moved to award the 2023 Paint Line Striping and Raised Pavement Markings Replacement Project to Specialized Pavement Marking LLC in the amount of $342,575 and authorize the mayor to sign all necessary documents, subject to final terms and conditions acceptable to the city attorney and Public Works Director.
Second. All right, we've got a motion to second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, with that, we are down to no executive session. That brings us to item number 12, which is adjournment. End of the meeting. Again, thank you all for being here this evening. Thank you, Council, for all the work that you do in between these meetings. And with that, we are adjourned.